All right, good evening. Thank you all. I know a lot of you have had a lot of your schedules to be here this evening. This is a meeting that a lot of you, both Planning Commission and City Council, have asked me on and off about for many years. And what the goal is here this evening is it's time for a comprehensive plan update. And the planning staff has been working diligently on that. Along with that, a lot of you have asked tonight about AIGM, I mean that's the Auburn Interactive Growth Model. And Logan Kiff was the Principal Planner at ours, and now he's leading the Engineering Services Department. He's a multi-talented city employee, and we're very proud of Logan. He's going to make a kind of shared presentation, but he'll go over what our growth model is. There's other very important things you will see tonight. We're going to talk about the major street plan, what does that mean? We're going to talk about water and sewer master plans, how do we go about that? We're going to talk about the potential. Some of you have asked, which is where you come from, Chris Wall, about West Auburn, what's projected for West? And when I say West Auburn, west of the vet school, west of Webster Road, west of Wire Road, or sometimes North of Wire Road, depending on how you do that running. We're going to talk through lots of scenarios about that tonight. A few things, as we said, we are recording this, and we can post it on our website, so any citizen interested or interested party can review this. The goal is to inform Planning Commission, who recommends the City Council, and the City Council, who ultimately makes decisions about what's going on from a planning and development perspective, where we are today. You're going to hear numbers about lots available in the planning and development districts. You're going to hear all kinds of things. You're going to see how our growth model very much coincides, and ironically, has been very accurate with where the census area thinks our population is. And you're going to understand behind the scenes. A lot of you have also asked about the growth boundary and optimal boundary, as we call it, what went into that? There were some things, a little over a year ago, we heard from citizens saying they thought we just made up the growth boundary. The staff, you know, as if some of that is not scientific. It was a very, very detailed process that a lot of our staff went through to come up with where an optimal boundary is, why it is that way. So much information to come tonight to make sure you're fully informed. What do we need from you? The city attorneys are here to keep you from the deliberation front, but what we do need is moving forward. And Logan will get into a little more of the timeline like this. Planning Commission will see a comprehensive plan update after we get some public input. We have some scenarios toward the end of this relative to West Auburn. And you don't have to say, you should not say how you vote on something, but if you have questions about it or preferences, it does help us to know, because we've got to put one scenario forward for the public to review, to then eventually get the Planning Commission and on to City Council for adoption. So why does this matter? Because you see, and Planning Commission saw today, they have several recommendations of approval and several recommendations of denial by the staff relative to the future land use plan. And so there's a lot that goes into this. We want you to know the why, and you're going to hear much. Basically, every department head in the city is here. They're here for a good reason. They want to hear what you have to say. They're also learning about what goes into this, but they're also here to answer a question, in case you have one, about their area relative to the information you hear tonight. So that's why they're here. They want to be here. And this is what we live for, is to provide information to you and to answer your questions. Logan has some built-in time to answer questions. However, if it's just burning and you're going to forget it, you know, please get the microphone and ask it. And again, the only reason for the microphones is so we can pick it up and make sure those who take an attention, I can hear this. I also want to welcome, we invited the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also to listen in. We have several members of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that are here, and I appreciate them coming as well. It gives them perspective, and the board was also invited, just because it impacts everything that they do, and we wanted them to have the benefit of this as well. All right, if there are no questions, I'll have Logan come up and we'll get started. Oh, and last, we will give you a copy of the presentation at the end. And the presentation will also be posted on the city's website.
Okay, so, everybody hear me? So thanks again for taking the time out of your day to come be with us today. So basically, broken up essentially where two mini work sessions into one work session, really cover a lot of the background, what goes into long-range planning. Hopefully, that will give you a good starting point for future discussions. So first, kind of half of the presentation, we're going to talk about the Comp Plan 2030, which is our long-range comprehensive plan. And then the second half, we'll talk about AIGM, the Auburn Interactive Growth Model, or AIGM. I like her pronunciation better than, but we'll go ahead and get right into it. So first off, you know, what is a comprehensive plan? Auburn's Conference Land Use Plan, it's called Comp Plan 2030. It's a long-range plan that looks at how land could or should be used through the horizon here of 2030. It was originally adopted in 2011 by council. It had a major update in 2018. We're now in a, what we call, update cycle in 2023, and then in 2024. It's a big kind of piece that comes up again and again. You know, the Comp Plan is a lot more than just the future land use plan and optimal boundary. But that is, Chapter Three, the land use section of that plan, comes up all the time. It comes up monthly, and our staff reports to Planning Commission. It comes up in discussions about annexation. So conference plans in Alabama are an advisory document. And what we mean by that is, we're trying to provide consistency in these plans to when a property owner wants to re-own a property, or if someone wants to annex in land, they can go directly to that land use plan and see, is what they're wanting to do compatible with that plan? And one of the most important points, I try to stress about conference planning, is that it is comprehensive. It is not, you know, the planning department didn't sit in an office somewhere and try and draft up plans. We went out into the community. We met with Auburn University, Auburn City Schools. We're looking at the built environment, you know, how many schools do we have, how many fire pits do we have? We want to take into account as much as we can about the built environment, but also we want to look at what are our residents wanting to see? What are the things in our citizen surveys that are telling us they want to see more of? And I'd say the other thing about conference plans is that you're trying to pull together all the different plans that the city has. Transportation plans, the CIP, Parks and Recreation Plans. All those things kind of meshed together and tell us how do we need to use land in the city to achieve those goals. So one of the very first steps in creating a conference plan is, it's a visioning document as well. It's not just a recommendation of how to use land. It's also looking at visioning and goals for our city, how land should be used. So basically, in the initial creation of the Comp Plan, there was lots of stakeholder input, lots of professional input. And we essentially asked residents, you know, how do you want to see Auburn in 2030? What does that look like to you? And so basically, through a questioning process, kind of a feedback process, we developed 12 vision statements. And you'll see all those vision statements, even though they were created in 2011, they're still very relevant today. All right, so as I mentioned, Chapter Three is the land use chapter of the Comp Plan. It's something that's referred to by staff quite a bit. It was developed and adopted in 2011 as part of that initial conference planning effort. It provides, that land use section has what's called a future land use plan, but also has the optimal boundary. And so the optimal boundary is basically the maximum area extent and geographic extent that we would recommend the city grow to by year 2030. It's one of the requirements for being eligible to annex into the city. There's annexation policy that was created in 2012. And we'll kind of touch on how that came to be part of our policy, how it became, you know, something that we're not really allowing people to annex different ways, far removed from that area. And kind of just an update on how much land is still out there. There's a little over a third of that optimal boundary is still out there today. That's the area you see in kind of greenish color there. About 22,000 acres that's still remaining. Warren got here, because he'll probably be able to share a lot about kind of the background of what was happening prior to 2011, prior to having that conference plan and optimal boundary. There was just massive amounts of land being plused and being annexed into the city. Kind of starting in 1995, all the way to 2010, you just had, you know, 3,000, 5,000, 5,000 acres getting annexed in the city, and not just nearby the city, spread out from the urban core, basically. And so that's, you know, that's a lot of growth. There's been growth in Auburn since the 90s, even since the 80s. But when you're growing that far geographically, you have to extend water mains. You have to add new school bus routes, new garbage collection routes. So all those things end up getting very costly to sort of manage. And so growth boundary is just a little bit of planning background on those. As a planning tool, as a development tool. It's specifically designed so, you know, you're not destroying prime agricultural land. You're not going way far out from the city and developing suburban growth, you know, very far away from city services. So here, we've got to go a little bit of a map series, kind of show you what was happening on the ground with the city limits from that time period. So in 1990, there, that was the city limits at that time. You see 1995, starts around a little bit, but really where you see that large expansion is from 2000 to 2010. Basically, goes way far north, keeps going north and kind of expanding outward. And that would be the preserve right in that area, for reference. Starts filling in a little bit more, and since 2011 moving forward, the amount of land getting annexed then is reduced significantly, because we have these kind of controls in place, but also because we're really focusing our growth as infill development. So who came up with optimal boundary? Where did it come from? It's a good question. The analysis that went behind it was basically a suitability analysis. So staff at the time looked at our existing city limits in 2010, 2011. It was decided we didn't want to enter Chambers County, we didn't want to enter Mason County. There are kind of some jurisdictional things that go on, trying to review things in multiple jurisdictions. That causes quite a bit of confusion. They also wanted to stay out of Opelika's planning area, because they have their own planning process. But from that kind of vantage point, looking at how do we provide city services? How do we keep growth inward into town? So we're not going way far out to provide police coverage, fire coverage? You know, how to extend new sewer mains, things like that? And really just trying to keep our population using the growth model or the AIGM to see what those impacts would be, and kind of create a scenario for how much population we could handle at the time with the optimal boundary. Any questions so far about optimal boundary?
Do you have a color to me?
Thank you.
Could you tell us, please, what the colors mean? We can't read them from here.
Sure, so they were given a score, and I don't know the exact scoring system, but it was basically from the least desirable to annex in to most desirable to annex. So as you get farther away, obviously red being not desirable for annexation. The dark green is most desirable for annexation. Those are places that are basically enclaves. This is a good example, and here, and here. Where we have city services, we have infrastructure available. We definitely want to see those properties in the city. So the other component to Chapter Three is that what's called the Future Land Use Plan. This is a recommending document that basically provides what staff would recommend each parcel could or should develop as going out to 2030. It's done parcel by parcel. It's for property, you know, property in the city limits has a designation as well as property in the county that's in that optimal boundary. So one of the things that kind of confuses residents a lot, and something I'll be explaining probably is, there's a difference between zoning and future land use designation. So the zoning is legally what you can do with your properties in the here and the now. Zoning tells you, you know, what kind of house can you build, how tall it can be, where does that figure on the property? The future land use designation is, as we like to say, here in the south, is what you might could do with the property. So it's very general, it's to say generally this area should be low density, single-family. Generally, this area should be commercial. So hopefully that kind of helps explain it too. But they do look very similar when you look at it on a map. I guess the only thing I pointed out, you know, we do a five-year update, but in between those updates, we do look at specific neighborhoods, corridors, and we do essentially studies on those areas to see if any conditions have changed that would require amending that future land use plan. So what I mean by changing conditions is, the new street's getting built, we want to know how we would hope that language developed in the future. We don't want to not have a plan. So what I don't mean by changing condition is if a property owner purchases a large, you know, sloped land, and they suddenly want to do something different than what's in the plan, that is not really a changing condition for us. We're looking at sewer capacity, water capacity, new roads, those types of things that, you know, or a neighborhood that's gone into the grind, how do we, you know, encourage development?
I have a question. Were you looking at this map right here? And my question is similar to Councilman Griswold. What are these colors? I mean, what is the green? I see more green. So what is the green? What is the pink, purple? Because you can't see that blue design right in the corner. So what do these all those mean?
Yeah, there's a lot of different colors on there, just like interpreting, we have, you know, over 23 different sounds. We have, I don't know off the top of my head, but some for where around 30 different future land use designation classes. But each one, like the green one, is a rural recommendation of that property generally should develop in a rural way. Or the pink, or I guess the purple color is industrial, that should generally be industrial. So there's just different colors that represent different things. You can go to that future land use plan and see all the different designations that are out there.
There's a, a place working there. On the city's website, we have all of this where citizens can zoom in, and there's also usually a static map that they can also see where you can zoom in. While you'll get this in your packet, if you need me to email where you can find this on our website, if we have it shared with you. But this is, this is something that existed a while. In planner speak, there's traditional land use colors. Yellow means low density residential, orange usually means medium density residential, and a different shade of green means parks. And it doesn't show through on this map, because it's showing the whole city.
You said parks, but the green?
No, no, a different shade of green, that's rural.
Oh, oh.
But yeah, it zoomed in, it would look differently.
And so what I said earlier about, you know, in Alabama having a comprehensive plan, it's the goal is to provide consistency, so that if anyone wants to see this and what the city's recommendation would likely be for a property, here it is. And it's been published and available since 2011. So yes, it does change from time to time, but the general idea has been keep rural, you know, in the periphery. As you get closer into town, having more dense development types. And this may help explain a little bit of that as well, but when developing that future land use plan, there's a lot of different elements that we're looking at. There's a lot of different data that goes into it. So one of the things we do, you know, you can't have apartments if you don't have water and sewer. You can't have industrials if you don't have high water pressure. So there's a lot of different things that, whether it be our major street plan, Parks and Agricultural Master Plan. We look at public safety response times, flood plan, and of course, adjacent uses to kind of come up with what we think would be an appropriate designation for property. So you can see some of those different layers that kind of gets built on top of each other. And our optimal boundary goes into that. And from that, we can make recommendations about how land should be used out to that 2030 horizon. I'm going to turn it over now to Eric Carson, our Water Resource Director, Forest Management Director, and then Allison Fraser will speak a little bit about major street planning.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to talk to everybody. Can you hear me now? Good evening. It's a pleasure to talk to you tonight. This is something that I normally don't get to talk to a lot of people about, but it's something that I'm looking forward to. Obviously, from a water and sewer planning standpoint, we have to keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on in the city on a daily basis. But sometimes we have to step away and take a bigger picture look. And what we do every five years is do a master facility plan. And we look at all of our water and sewer infrastructure and capacities and things. We get together with planners, our consultants, and other city departments. And basically, come up with this document that we use as a guidance document for the next 20-plus years. We can't just look short-term. We're looking 20 years, 50 years. We're looking way out on some of those things. So some of the things we look at, of course, the population growth, demand, flow injections from the water and sewer size. We look at high-growth areas, you know, like right now, northwest Auburn is a hot area. So we have a lot of focus in there. But our eye is also on the west side of town. We know that, you know, that might be the next place we go, but there's some things you got to, you know, we got to look at out there. You're coming in on Lochepoca Waterfall, we have jurisdiction out there. So once you get west, basically Webster Road, you're in their territory. So there could be some serious constraints there. From a sewer aspect, Chadwick Lane, if you try to go past Chadwick Lane, you're getting into other sewer bases. So that can present some challenges and require pump stations, which are very expensive to operate and maintain. So those are the things we look at. Other things to consider are, we evaluate the conditioning capacity of our existing utilities. One thing on the sewer side, as growth continues northwest Auburn, potential of west Auburn, is we may have to open up the northside sewer plant to offset some of that capacity being set to the south side of town if that were to explode or develop in high density. Anyhow, moving on from that, we strongly encourage gravity sewer when at all possible. Sending tanks through concern us, pump stations concern us, obviously, since recent task orders come through council. The thought of some developers proposing onsite, what they call packaged sewer plants for high development, developments, we would not be in favor of that, but that may be something you see come across your path in the future. I worry that if we were to set up something like that, I see people requesting to take those over at some point in the future, and that's not something that I think I would encourage. Another tool or toolbox, it's very important, the hydraulic water and sewer models. We're fortunate to complete a water model over 10 years ago. And that helps us track water quality, water pressure, ensure we have fire protection where needed. And on the sewer side, we've recently completed a sewer model on the northside town. We are now working on a sewer model on the southside of town, since recent task orders come through council for that. So real excited to get that done. We'll merge those eventually, another help us to put the whole picture together as we move forward. Finally, but not least, we have to keep our eye on current and projected regulatory requirements coming down from EPA. We have to worry about disinfection byproducts of water. The further out you get, water quality can become an issue. The age, lead coppers a big thing, but we don't have much to worry about here. We don't have a lot of lead in our system. The biggest thing coming down the pipe right now is PFOS. Some of you may have heard of it. It's what they call the forever contaminants. The EPA is supposed to come out with some new regulations, possibly later this year or early next year. And if they come out of what's projected, it would be challenging to treat some of this on the water. There is possibility of them putting limits on our sewer effluent biosolids in the future, which would also have some challenges, but we're monitoring that closely. We have a plan in place to address those. So anyhow, all of these go into a complex guide to help us develop our water and sewer capital projects, and they all play a important role as we move forward to grow. It's a lot piled into this one slide, but without getting into the details, that's my presentation.
It's working.
It's working?
It was. Is there a green light on?
For me, thank you. You mentioned, I guess it was the northside sewer treatment plant? Is it what it's called? The northside, the one at the end of originally that that way?
That's correct.
Okay. What level of renovation or construction or whatnot would it take to bring that back up to speed? Because the last time I was out there, it looked like you might as well just use the land, and that's about really all that's there that's worthwhile.
It would probably be a complete rebuild for the most part, because of the phosphorus limits in Chogahatchee Creek. So it would probably be, for the most part, a complete rebuild.
You mentioned Chadwick Lane and Lochepoca. Do you see us developing west of Chadwick Lane? And I guess the limiting factor, at least from your standpoint, is sewer. And would we have to have a sewer treatment plan? And that would, I guess we have to look at Lochepoca, much like Opelika, that we don't want to get into their zoning issues. But if you ever see us getting beyond Chadwick Lane?
Just quickly, we will talk about this area specific relative to sewer and other infrastructure shortly. So if you want to hold on to that, we're going to talk about that a little bit more in a hurry. And then I also think it's important that Eric can go over capacity of the existing sewer treatment plant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, recently, we were able to re-permit our southside treatment plant. The old permit was just over 11 million gallons a day. We recently re-permitted that for 25 million gallons a day. So we're in really good shape on that point. The conveyance system on the west side of town brings all the sewage from the northside plant down to the south side. So as long as we don't overload that system, we're in good shape for a very long time. And we can probably delay doing anything in northside.
Back to short people. Good evening. Just want to talk to you a little bit about the major street plan. Logan did mention that our major street plan is a component of the comprehensive plan. So what you see on the right is a current copy of our major street plan here. And the map on the left is a little something I'll mention in just a moment. What is the major street plan? It is a guide, just as a comp plan is a guide for... so as we use the major street plan, it helps us determine where those connections need to be. The map is used as we evaluate planning commission cases, as we develop our CIP, to determine what major streets need to be built, where are developments impacted by these major streets. Currently, our development regulations require that developments either set aside or construct major streets that are encompassing their property boundaries. So back to the long-range transportation plan. It is a federally required document that is a 20-year projection. It uses population growth and travel demands, and it determines where congestion is going to be in the future. We look at major plans and major projects, and then we come up with a transportation improvement program. The mayor is part of the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and so that process is actually managed through that body. But we do have a physically constrained improvement plan that is a result of the long-range transportation. We also use that plan, again, as we develop internal projects for our CIP. So back to the map on the left. Again, the map on the right is just a copy of that plan, of our comprehensive, or major street plan, excuse me. It shows collectors, local collectors, and arterials, and our proposed local commercial streets. So one example of how we use this map is on the left-hand side. This is North Donahue Drive. This is the site of the new Auburn High School. So on our map, we have a major street plan that would connect North Donahue Drive in alignment with Carrick Parkway, and this has been on our major street plan for some time, actually before the high schools. This is just another copy. This is Old Sanford. At the very top, that is Miss James' Room. And there's North Donahue is off the map. So this is just a copy of where the outer loop, this is the proposed outer loop. So again, as West Sanford Master Development Plan came in, we initially looked at where the proposed outer loop would go and any other major streets that the development needs to consider. You see some red lines through the map. You see some dotted blue lines. Those are some of our old alignments that we planned. As developments come in, the developments actually tweak those alignments and make them fit a little better to their development plans. And one of the things we look at more closely would be the end connection points. Right now, we are somewhat focused, I think as Eric mentioned, the northwest side of town. So as we began to look more at development, we've talked a little bit about number boundary over the years. It is in our six-year CIP. And we'll begin to look at maybe making that first connection of the west, northwest leg of the outer loop. Currently, we don't have plans. We're not looking at Highway 14 or Wire Road. Those roads right now have sufficient capacity. But we keep an eye on our volumes just as traffic changes, as Eric mentioned.
You don't have to have a seat. You touched on Wire Road and Highway 14, and a lot of council members had questions about our ability to widen it. Can you outline it a little further? And I'm sure planning commissioners have had the same question, what our impediments are particularly on Highway 14 and what we're seeing. You said, you know, volume-wise, we're fine right now, but can you focus a little bit on Highway 14? When I refer to it as Highway 14, that means that Aldot controls it, not the city of Auburn. If it's smartly for King Drive, that means it's in Auburn's control.
Yeah, thank you, Megan. So Highway 14 is actually a state route from the ramp at Shub Jordan West to the city limits. Many years ago, I don't remember when, we actually took over the state routes within the city limits, and that was a very good thing. So we own College Street from Shub Jordan, East University Drive, all the way to the top to East University, Shub Jordan, and we also assume maintenance of Highway 14. But one of the things we would have to do is get Aldot's consent. It would involve traffic analyses and getting Aldot, either requesting that they widen the road, or we would have to partner with them somehow to pay for widening. But it is under their control, and they would be most interested if it needed to be widened.
What about the railroad tracks and how much right-of-way would we mean on the north side of the road? You can't go south for widening, so would all of the right-of-way have to come through the existing residences, businesses, and other things that are on the north side of the road?
It would. The railroad tracks, for the most part, overlap Highway 14, I know at least, to get to Webster Road. So it's jointly owned by Aldot and CSX. As you get closer into town, somewhere probably around Bird, there's a small gap in railroad right-of-way and what used to be Aldot right-of-way, but all of the widening would have to be to the north side, which is one of the best answers.
Currently, we don't have widening of either any long-range plan. Anybody have any questions for Allison, like that up here? Not yet. I think one other important thing to note for all of you is you heard Eric say that water and sewer were doing five-year plans. We've been doing a 10-year citywide traffic and transportation update and study. Allison, by the next budgeting period, we'll be coming up with a new timeframe of how we're looking. We look at transportation all day, every day, however, and how we're doing it just based on current demands. And believe it or not, as things change, so do our intersections. She can think one year we need to study something and fix it, and that will fix itself as traffic patterns change due to development and people's driving patterns, and we open new schools or new churches or what have you. We see pattern changes, so she is looking at several models in which we will study a little bit differently, and we'll be ready to talk about that a little more under the council as we roll into the next budget cycle, so she knows the clock is ticking between now and the spring as we begin to formulate the budget, where that goes. I think one other thing that we don't talk about a lot is our management. The council has seen this, but people get irritated when there's accidents on the interstate. Public safety has no choice but to close the interstate for various unsungary reasons, and here comes traffic through town. We do everything we can, and we actually pay a company, and our staff gets out, and we monitor and manage the signals of which we're trying to route the traffic through, and we change timings, and we do that on the fly. We do that with some help from a company, and public safety does everything they can to direct people around. However, GPS in people's cars also does what it wants to do, and we cannot force you, once we get you off the interstate, to go exactly the way we'd like for you to go. But there's a lot going on behind the scenes with that, a lot more than our citizens realize. Nothing is ever as it seems. But with our traffic patterns, as I've talked about before, one of our challenges is lack of connectivity. Yes, we continue to harp on that as a staff, and we will continue to do so. When these two bodies combined don't acquire that a road connect, then that puts more traffic on the streets around it. The best example, not picking on Auburn University, but when it became a pedestrian campus, we were initially told and not by the current staff, so not, or a menstruation, that it would have no impact on Magnolia and College Street. And that was what the staff said at the time, and it has a massive impact because traffic has nowhere to go. And the university sees it on Sanford on their section and at Donahue on their section as well. So it's great to have a pedestrian campus from a walkability standpoint for students, but it does put more stress around it. So just an example, when we don't connect roads, we do have some more challenges on the roads around them. And so it's something we grapple with all the time, and it's hard for us to model when we're expecting a road to connect, and now it doesn't. Then we have to remodel. So just a notion of what happens, but Logan, carry on.
Okay. So as I mentioned a little bit earlier on, we are in an update cycle of comp plan 2030. So I want to tell you a little bit about where we are with that, what goes into it, and kind of what some of our next steps will be for that. Everything you've seen up to this point is current, you know, existing plans and documents. So nothing that's been done so far is anything different than what's been out there since 2011, basically, or 2018, the last update and stuff. So what do we do in an update? The main things we're doing is we're going through the document since it was last updated in 2018. We're looking at all the graphs, the text, the data that's been kind of different from 2018. How many new fire stations have we added? How many new parks have we added? How many miles of new sidewalk? We're looking at all those different changes since the last update. Then what we do with that information is we're trying to assess how conditions have changed, and then we make recommendations to the future land use plan based on any of those changes. And sometimes, that can be something very minor, like this property, you know, is then for industrial, but daycare was built on it. However, that may have happened. We want to go through and make sure our comp plan and our zoning matches what's on the ground, where it makes sense to do. Other situations would be if a new roadway gets built, like I mentioned before, we want to have a plan in place for what's going to happen along that roadway. Things we're not doing with comp plan update is we're not creating a new comprehensive plan. That is a very kind of long process to go through, requires a lot of staff time, a lot of professional kind of assistance with something like that. So even though there may be issues with the current comp plan, or people may not agree with everything in it, you don't necessarily want to start from scratch on something like that. It's better to have an imperfect plan in place than have no plan at all, I would say. We're not rewriting the zoning ordinance, although the comp plan and zoning ordinance are very much tied together. There's a lot that would go into starting a new zoning ordinance as well. And we're also not doing a new municipal strategic plan. So a strategic plan like Auburn 2020, that is the city's goals for how to use its resources. A comprehensive plan is the community's goals for how to use the land that we have. A little bit of nuance there between the two, although the two would tie into each other. Any other municipal plan we have has to directly relate back to the comp plan and how we're going to use our land. In terms of scheduling, Phase 1 is pretty much done. That's where we essentially met with all the departments in the city, university, Auburn City Schools, shared kind of the techs that we have and got back feedback of what, you know, updates they may have to share with the public, what new projects they have coming up, and so capturing all that information. Phase 2 is kind of where we're at now. We're looking at future land use plan, we're looking at zoning and optimal boundary. We wanted to have this work session with you all first before we kind of move into opening it up to the public and seeing kind of some of their thoughts and ideas about how the land use plan is either working or not working. And then Phase 3, early spring of next year, we hope to have some recommendations to the planning commission, which ultimately then go for council for your hopefully adoption. But there's always a kind of a back and forth between staff, the planning commission, and the public before we get something to a point that we can bring to council. Any other questions about comprehensive planning before we move into kind of the next section? Okay. So the Auburn Interactive Growth Model. This is a planning tool that was developed basically for us, for Auburn specifically, back in 2009. They're a company called Metro Forecasting Models. It is a statistic-based model. That sounds very sleek, but it's really just a lot of Excel workbooks and lots and lots of formulas and everything that we kind of ship off to the consultants to run some processes off. But the model gets updated about every two years, and the last update was AIGM 20, which was finished in spring of '22. And one thing I want to point out about AIGM and what it, I guess, kind of the scope of what it does, you essentially feed it all of our existing land uses, all of our zoning, all of the vacant land we have in the city. And it takes that vacant land and builds it out to infinity essentially, or 2080, 2085. Using that, basically their algorithms that they have in there, it allocates population over time with that build-out. And so one of the first steps we do in creating that model is we want to look at all the existing land uses in the city. We do the same thing in the county, but we're going to start with the city because it does have a lot of very useful information. Kind of the first thing I want to hit on, you know, yes, single-family uses take up a large chunk, are number one users of land in city limits, but our next two have a lot of implications for kind of the future of Auburn. So the second highest use is what we call planned development districts, or PDBs. The model looks at those planned development districts, how many units are approved in them, and what the approval is designed to build out as. It's like the preserve may have a 30-year build-out, it's approved for a certain amount of units. The model takes that information and builds that out in towards the approval. For vacant land, that's our third-largest use of land in the city limits, or undeveloped vacant. It takes the same thing, takes that vacant land, looks at what it's zoned for, looks at the future land use plan, and again, builds it out over time. So one of the things that was very, it's always eye-opening, I guess, to see it, is all the different planned development districts that are currently out there. So that's, there are others that have been finished, there are some partial PDDs, but these are the main players, let's say, in Auburn currently. So Old Sanford, you saw not too long ago, it's in 2021. And just for comparison, here's the preserve. So the preserve is only about a third of the way built out. Old Sanford is about the same size, and they're currently starting to work on that. But all in all, there's over 7,000 housing units that are approved, and if that's just approval, be built or not yet built. So you'll see those develop over time. You'll see more than half of those are in the northwest area of town. So a lot of the kind of future growth, future development we're going to see will be in those PDBs.
How many of the lots, approved lots, do we, do we have a buildable, you know, side of that? Are all of them buildable, or are there proposed lots that we would see that maybe aren't buildable?
Yeah, sure. And that was one of the questions I had earlier on about this chart particularly is, a developer may request and get approval for 2,000 lots. They may only build 1,800, but, you know, that difference in what's being approved versus what they actually build, it's hard to say. For our purposes, we'd rather model it with the worst-case scenario. We'd rather see what's the maximum they can do rather than guesstimating if they go backwards. And like Moore's Mill, you just recently saw, they actually are increasing what was approved. So you do have that happening as well. The third-largest use of land is just vacant or undeveloped land. A lot of it's tied up in rural, and so the, you know, the model doesn't rezone property. It is a snapshot in time when the model was run. So yes, some amount of that rural will likely rezone over time, but the other two major zoning districts that are out there are CDD... So a lot of the kind of future growth, future development we're going to see will be in those PDDs.
How many of the lots, approved lots, do we, do we have a buildable, you know, side of that? I mean, are all of them buildable, or are there proposed lots that we would see that maybe aren't buildable?
Yeah, sure, and that was one of the kind of questions I had earlier on about this chart particularly is, a developer may request and get approval for 2,000 lots. Then they only build 1,800. But, you know, that difference in what's being approved versus what they actually build, it's hard to say. For our purposes, we'd rather model it with the worst-case scenario. We'd rather see what's the maximum they can do, rather than guesstimating if they go backwards. And like Moore's Mill, you just recently saw, they actually are increasing what was approved. So you do have that happening as well. The third largest use of land is just vacant or undeveloped land. A lot of it's tied up in rural, and so the, you know, the model doesn't rezone property. It is a snapshot in time when the model was run. So yes, some amount of that rural will likely rezone over time. But the other two major zoning districts that are out there are CDD and DDH. CDD, our model, and how the, how we look at CDD in the model is basically about a 70-30 split. About 70% residential, 30% non-residential. Our DDH is a residential-only zoning district, but those two combined is another large source of kind of residential growth that you'll see in the future. Here's, I guess, the exciting part that we'll look at. So the bottom, the next axis is time and five year increments. The Y-axis going north or up and down is population. The green line here is the decennial census, going back to 1930. And then, so what you have in the orange line, and I guess for reference, we're about in here in 2023. So that orange line is the model's projected population over time with the existing city limits, the existing zoning. So that means if you were to never rezone another property, never annex in another property, that's sort of the population that we're projecting out to 2080. The gray line, see above it, that is the existing optimal boundary. You know, current, no change, is how that would build out over time to 2080. And I have a little few more slides that we'll talk about, you know, how that was developed. But essentially, the, because annexations are totally voluntary, you know, this orange line can increase somewhat, or none at all, up to that gray line. Hopefully that makes sense, a little confusing. We can't predict when or where some will annex in property, because it's voluntary. So, but we can tell you how many people are out there. And over time, some percentage of those people will request to be part of the city limits.
Question? Yeah, with the optimal boundary, I notice that it keeps on moving up. Does that assume that's a, it's a, right now it seems like it's constant, rather than something that actually moves with the population? Is that, I'm not quite sure I understand.
Sure. So how the model looks at the optimal boundary is, any land that's vacant in that optimal boundary that's not in the current city limits, develops that one home per three acres. So it's taking all that vacant land and slowly subdividing it, one home per three acres over time. So, and that's, I guess, the important thing about this being a snapshot is that, you know, again, you're not adding any new land to the city limits. So we're looking at the potential of people that could annex into that city limits. Hopefully that makes sense? You could have some or none of that line become part of the city limits over time. And so predicting population is a bit like kind of predict the weather. There is some level of error, there's some level of probability. And so what you see is dashed gray lines on the upper and lower ends of that. There's the 5% error rate, I would respect. So you may have a five-year period where you have less than what's projected. You may have a five-year period that's more than what's projected, but at the end of the day, it should roughly be in that zone. Here's a zoomed-in view of that, and this time looking at some of the different census products that are out there, not just the decennial census. So the model, you know, the census, 2020 census had a 7.6143. When we did the model and ran it, we were at 7.7320, so very, very close. That's a good sign. But I'll also show you, these are the trackings of all the different versions of the model over time. All the, like, all the 2009. We've run this several different times, and they've all generally looked about the same. A little bit of variation between them. AIGM 20 is a bit higher. We did experience a lot of growth between 2015 and 2020, basically. One of the other products that we can develop with the AIGM is we can work at individual areas of town. And so what we do, we, we kind of aggregate areas into these five different zones or areas. And the largest area that we're expecting to grow is not really any surprise, but the northwest area of town. Again, a lot of that's being driven by those PDDs that are already approved. Will be slowly building out over the next 15, 20 years. So just to give you some reference, that projected population by 2030 in Area 4 is about 6,000 people. And for reference, a council ward is about 9,000 people. So more than half of a new council ward worth of population moving into that area.
And at the moment, four and five combined are pretty much a more than three.
Second largest area to grow is Area 5. Expecting a little over 3,000 people by 2030 in that area. A lot of that's being driven by the Farmville Lakes. A lot of it's driven by some multifamily projects that have been approved, but haven't quite gotten out of the gates yet. Area 3 is that southwest area of town. A lot of that's being driven, again, by PDDs, Skylas and Harley, and Dawson Corner and Swan Pond. About 1,500 people expected to move in there by 2030. Of course, Area 2, not as much growth happening in that area. They're restricted by a lot of the kind of conservation requirements, being so close to the Lake Otter watershed. Area 1, we are expecting to see lots of redevelopment. But again, as I kind of mentioned, the model is a snapshot in time. So we're not re-gilling property or re-zoning property, or making changes to existing built developments. But that will certainly contribute over time in Area 1. So one of the things that we can do with the AIGM is we can start running some scenario-based programs. And we did exactly that. We looked at three different scenarios. The first one is something that we do with every model iteration. We want to know how many people are out there in the optimal boundary, and how many people could there be once it goes down? And that gives us that, that gray line that you saw in the overall projection. The second scenario was we're asked to look at what would be the effects on population if we were to expand a new hypothetical sanitary sewer main into a new basin? What would that do to population? And then the third scenario we looked at was, are there places in the city limits, in the west side of town, that currently have utilities available to them, but their future land use designation is rural? And what would be the effects of essentially changing their designation to allow or encourage development? So in that first one, I kind of mentioned it. We're basically taking all the vacant land that's in this optimal boundary that you're seeing green, building out at one home per three acres, which is the max you can do, and looking at what that does to population. So existing population out there is about 3,600 people. If, you know, all of that were to develop at that pace by the year 2085, you would have a little over, well, a little under 7,000 people. Not a lot of people. These parcels are huge, average size like 14 acres. The household size is very low in these areas. So overall, you know, not a huge amount of potential people, but it's still there. Okay, the second scenario we looked at was basically, you know, expanding a potential sanitary sewer into a new basin. We looked at how that builds out without any changes versus how it would build out with that sewer extension. So on the left-hand side, you see the area in red, that's our basin that was modeled. Essentially, a lot of it's rural, a lot of it doesn't have any, you know, other than rural development potential. Not a lot that they can do with the current regulations. So its current population is a little over 1,000. If we're to build out by year 2085, you're looking at about 700 more people.
Logan, real quick, let's orient everybody. The far right is Chad McLean, Diesel Park. Then the red, yep, the top is Highway 14. The bottom would be Wire Road. And then what is your western boundary there? Does that be Highway, Blue Road 10? Both of the high schools sits up in the upper corner of that, so that would be just orienting. Sorry about that.
Thank you for that. So all in all, there's about 1,500 acres of vacant land in that model red area. Without doing anything, that area would build out about 700 more people. On the right side, though, if you were to extend this sort of hypothetical sewer main into that basin, we're looking at a lot more growth. A little over 6,000 new residents would essentially be able to inhabit that area. And the reason that's happening in the model is because once sewer is available, properties start annexing in, they start requesting to rezone the property, and sort of has a domino effect, spreading out from that main all the way out to all the vacant lands. And so that, that time due for helping that phase is a very long time. But nonetheless, that ultimate end build-out is way more people than the do-nothing scenario. Here's just a summary of that. As I mentioned, you know, adding that sewer main has a big impact on population, and also on what kind of city services that are provided to it. And finally, we looked at, you know, in that same area, if we want to encourage growth, or there's a need to encourage growth, we have some mechanism to do that, where there's existing infrastructure. We don't have to extend a new sewer main. We don't have to add new police routes, or water mains, things like that. We can achieve somewhat of the same outcome by just making some tweaks to the future land use plan. So this time we looked at a larger area, the area in red again. See, there's Highway 14 at the top. And then down here is, what?
College Street.
Gettman College. And here's I-85, that's across the little bit. But in that area, we found about 1,500 acres of land that is either currently in the city limits, but its future land use designation is rural, or it's outside of the city limits, but may have the utility running right through it. And so by making those changes to the future land use plan, the model predicted we could have additional 3,300 residents in that build-out for that area. And the reason we conducted these two studies, the sewer expansion and future land use, we really wanted to showcase, we really wanted to showcase, you know, on the far left is, that's your do-nothing. If you were to never rezone another property, or never annex in another piece of land, you'd have a build-out of about a little over 8,000 people in that area in red. If you were to expand sewer, you could have a little over, a little less than 12,000 people. But you could achieve the same thing by just adjusting the future land use designation of properties, without expanding utilities, or having increased costs to the city, after providing city services. But the even bigger question, I guess, or thing to look at is, any of these scenarios are almost a drop in the bucket when you're looking at the overall city population. All of our projections have essentially said, there's no reason for us to not reach 100,000 people by 2040. And that may be off 1,000 here, or under 1,000 there. But it's a very real possibility that we'll reach that. And so I think the, I guess, the highlights of what we're trying to express to you is, there are planning tools, like the optimal boundary, or like our comprehensive plan, that can be used to achieve increased growth if there's a desire to go beyond that. If there's a desire for Auburn to be more than 100,000 people. There are tools available to achieve that. And the city has a plan for growth. We've had this plan for growth, and we're basically tracking with that gray. Any other questions?
All right. You mind getting Kelly the microphone? And anybody here that's on the staff who has any questions, so, you know, relative to this?
Under scenario number three, does that assume that those properties are all going to remain on subject tanks if they have major developments in that area?
That would be, so if the property is not within a, not within a distance to a sewer, they would develop that one home per three acres.
Thank you.
There's a outer loop scenario. Is that basically Beehive Road on the west?
I know, what part of the city comes over?
West.
There, so the beginnings of the outer loop start at Exit 50. They go to Corporate Parkway, where it currently turns into Technical Parkway. Corporate Parkway, actually, it can be winded out to a four-lane divided highway, basically. It's, the beginnings are there, and it stops and bumps up against Dudley Family property that abuts Wire Road. And so that section, Logan may take us backwards to the vacant street plan. But you may have to escape out of the presentation. But one of the notions that we have, and I've been talking with the city engineer about it, and she alluded to, is in certain sections, I expect one of our first sections of the outer loop to get down further north, is possibly the Mrs. James to Richland Road connection. I would love to do Mrs. James to Highway 14, or Richland to Highway 14. But again, rideaway constraints are challenging, and this is something that is high on my agenda in terms of every time we meet with a congressional delegation, we ask about the outer loop. Every time we meet with our state delegation, we ask about the outer loop. One of our challenges is funding the outer loop will take federal and state funds to do it. The city cannot fund it by itself, and yes, developers have provided rideaway. And so one of the reasons that I wanted to look at the buy Old Sanford Development to Richland connection is rideaway is almost all complete, correct, Allison? And so that, I'm trying to begin to pick off sections where we have rideaway, and we can fund construction, and move on. But the notion is you could go from Exit 50, and that would actually, in the future, we don't own Sugar and Parkway, the state does. And our goal with the outer loop is if you get from Exit 50 further west than Sugar and Parkway, up to US Highway 280, you've got to connect two major things, then eventually the city can own Sugar and Parkway and change many things about it. So we need to get the western side. And so in the scenario, Logan, can you point out where the outer loop is still? On the western side of the city, right there, perfect. Keep going up.
What are those roads?
That doesn't exist today.
Okay.
That is the outer loop.
This is Richland.
Yeah, Richland there, and then Mrs. James would be the next piece up.
That's Miss Jack, right there? Is 188, where is 188? West?
West.
This is all been really great information. It's very technical. My question is, when we start having public input sessions, what are we actually asking the public to give input on? And what are we actually trying to garner for the next steps?
So our next steps in the comp plan update, so the AIGM is done, but if there's anything specifically that people want to look at, happy to kind of develop those products for them. The comp plan update, as I said, we want to have this with you all first, to give you an understanding of what all is going on in the background. But our next step is basically publish the text itself, not including any proposed changes, not including any proposed differences in zoning, in optimal boundary, or any of that, yet. We want to give the public a chance to just review the document, the text in the document, have a chance to take a look at that first. And then kind of our next steps would be start having open house sessions and working with the public. And then kind of our next steps would be start having open house sessions and working with the planning commission on any of the areas of town that they want us to look at more closely. I will tell you, staff have looked at some areas of town, specifically the optimal boundary and a few areas where in order to run that analysis about changing the future land use designation, we did look at some areas of where, hey, there's utilities here. We could potentially look at allowing some type of building beside rural. But, you know, that gets into a lot of political question because now you're going beyond the hundred thousand mark, essentially. Every, every time you adjust the land use plan or rezone a property, you're changing that trajectory a little bit.
That's a great question. One of the outcomes of looking for tonight, there's been some discussion among the council and planning commission saw a project relative to this as well that went on in the city council is look a little bit about, about what I call West Auburn, this Chadwick Lane, Heasel Park to the western limits of the optimal boundary. And yes, sewer could be built in that area. You know, and one of the things is moving forward to the public comment period, I'm not willing to ask the staff to open that area up for development if we're not getting a signal from you that that's what you think you want to do. Meaning, we have to do some work to build up to that. There are some anomalies like Blutch Poca High School is in the optimal boundary. That needs to come out. We're not, there's long been, both Beauregard and Blutch Poca are very convinced that at some point in time, the city of Auburn is going to try to absorb them. That is not the case at all whatsoever. And those are great communities and have their own identities and that's not our goal here. So there's some logical things that need to come out, but a lot of council members have also said, Megan, what is this optimal boundary thing and do we need to expand it? The Chambers County notion and Bacon County notion have to do with dealing with multiple governmental jurisdictions. For us, you know, we have a great agreement with Lee County about how we, we deal with annexations, about our subdivision regulations and many other things. If we're dealing with two more counties, that's much for all of us collectively to deal with. And until these groups collectively, particularly the governing bodies, say, hey, we want to do this differently. We do want to do that and we're instructing the staff to go for it, then, then we will. The West Auburn area, what I'm trying to clearly point out to you is, and, and staff did a great job of this, we've got differing scenarios. You can leave it alone at this time. We do this every five years. I'll remind you, we've got our new planning director here and he gets the encounter. Guess what? Comp Plan twenty thirty is running out of time. This is the last five-year update you're going to see before we redo the whole thing. And in the middle of this, we'll have, Logan differentiated very well, we'll have Auburn twenty forty that is also going to be setting a direction that is a little less about the land and a little more about everything else. And so there's a lot going on in this realm. And I think you as the decision makers and the ones, you know, our planning commission is in the weeds with development as it should be, but it needs all the information to make solid recommendations to the city councils. We want to put all this information in your hands comprehensively to say, there's a lot going on out there. And we're happy as the staff to do what you're asking us to do. However, if we open this western area up, you saw how many lots are left in PDDs. And it was a great question of Max to say, hey, how many lots would really build out? And people ask usually for a little more density than expected, but we haven't seen, we have seen some large lot developments come in, but we're usually seeing people are getting closer and closer. And I think we've all witnessed that properties being developed we didn't expect to be developed. And that's okay. It's, we, the land use plan has allowed that and that's fine. The other notion is when you modify the land use plan or allow something to change outside of that, we wanted you to see the stat, the model is static. So if we open up property unexpected, then that adjusts everything about the model. And not in a bad way. It's your decision. It is just, it does have an effect on everything else that we do. And so the Woodward Oaks development, while it was south of Farmville Road, was not initially slated for development at the time that land use decision was made. It was logical that it was made. However, things like WU widening and so on were not planned for at that time. We have since changed scenarios as we adjust as a staff, but it helps that we get direction from you where you're going. So the purpose of the West Auburn side is we don't want to go out there and say, okay, we're, we're not proposing anything and for you guys to quickly say, why did you waste all of our time studying this? You know, when we think, no, we should open it. I, you know, that is the question that we have. Staff's recommendations aren't going to be for massive changes in the land use plan to increase density greatly across the city or to open up massive areas because of the scenarios you see. However, we can manage what, what we do have and we can manage changes. We just need to know about them. So, oops, David, sorry. That was David. We can all look at him now. And so that's generally what we're looking for. And to make sure we're here collectively, the staff to answer your questions about just before we embark further on this process.
Logan, I have one question real quick. So when you have an applicant come to development services and not necessarily one of our engineers, because I assume they look at this a lot before they make it, make a request. But, you know, when it's a citizen and they're dealing with a house, let's say, out on one of these rural areas, what information are they shown when they come in with you guys? Are they kind of giving like a triage and say, hey, this is the future land use of this parcel? This is where we want this to go? What does that look like for someone who knows absolutely nothing about this and has a request for you guys?
Yeah, so we love it when people come to us first with their questions before they embark on a project or start a plan for building permits or whatever. We always help them to come talk to us first. We're happy to sit down with people, go through the rules, while rules are there, as much information as we can give them. A lot of this is available out on the website. And it's not too hard to find if you go to alabama.org/mac. Yep. It's got major street plan, it's got all of our zoning information, the future land use plan. Pretty much anything that you need to know is out there. It is a little bit hard to navigate, you know, as people will tell us, especially if it might not be as tech savvy, but we're happy to, you know, to call, sit down with people, walk them through whatever, whatever they need to know. And that's brief for all of our departments.
That was my question. During COVID, it seemed like folks were seeking more three-acre type lots, two, three-acre type lots. I'm assuming that's kind of gone by the wayside or is that, did that, did the data reflect that at all? Or is that really not, not necessarily the case, if you see it that way?
I don't have a good answer for y'all on that. I would say that we've seen, as Megan kind of said this, we've seen lots that we thought, there's no way someone's going to build on this, get built on. And that's part of how this model is built too. Got more slides that are really narrating, talk about how the model works. But the model builds curves that are S-curves. And so what it's, what it's trying to represent is that as land supply gets less and less, people are willing to build on less and less desirable land. So as your regular green development area is taken up, people start building in floodplain or start building in, you know, less desirable areas. So it does increase some costs. It does have an issue with affordability, but, you know, we're just seeing a lot of, a lot of growth overall. If there's a piece of land to be built on, someone's trying to build on it.
Any other questions?
As we're concluding here, Megan, what are, what are some of the thoughts and ideas that these people here need to offer to you and the staff as far as direction?
Well, I'm not getting an overwhelming response from you that you're saying, please make the western portion of the city dense. I'm not hearing that from you. You're not, you know, you're not here to vote on it and some of you may disagree about that. But collectively, you know, our plan is to inform without recommending that unless, unless you hear otherwise. Doesn't mean you can't change it in the process, but it means as we get started, I don't see in the data something I'm willing to recommend to you or nor the rest of the staff that we're ready to heavily develop the western part of the city considering the seventy-two hundred lots available in PDDs. And that wasn't the rest of the lots. That's just what's in plan development districts.
But then including potentialities from CDD and DDH, which is another, I don't know, fifteen hundred, couple thousand?
Right, but I mean, seventy-two hundred was just in PDDs.
Seventy-two hundred is only what's approved as a PDD.
And, and timing shouldn't scare you on that. As we know, the preserve was, when it started in the two thousand and six timeframe, it was supposed to be built out by now. And it's nowhere near built out, so I don't, don't look at it that way. We are planning for these things, that, that is all. It gives us an idea of what might happen, that's why the model. And that has to do with every department in this room, we rely heavily on this. Katrina's sitting here, just pride, you know, garbage and trash service. You know, we've got police and fire, we have all of those things. And what matters to us is who to know or plan for what might be happening. You will see tweaks in this as it moves forward. When you get to the land use piece, there will be some changes, but there's not going to be a wholesale large area of the city probably all of a sudden going from rural to high density. Is, is not a, not what we plan to bring forward at this stage. But there will be pockets of changes that are logical as we think. Actually, I just want to make sure we're not getting the temperature from you of you guys are...
Well, in fairness to the council in particular, because the planning commission looks at this more often. I mean, I, I would expect some of us to have epiphanies over the next couple of days, have questions and thoughts that they want to share, particularly with you. And, and that might drive further conversation.
And that's okay. We want to make sure that we're, as this process embarks, you kind of know where we're coming from and it will evolve, it evolves. And this will be wrapping up right before we're in a full kickoff mode of twenty forty, which is a good thing. But also, a lot of you have been asking, where are we with these things? Where are things going? Where did they come from? And we want to make sure, you know, there's a method to the madness. We had a lot of questions last summer, as I indicated, it is election season for city council. We get a lot of citizen questions and as much that goes into this, the staff that sits in this room plans for all of this every day of the week, this is what we are here for. And it's okay to change direction in any which direction. We just need to know what the direction is. So we go methodically as we adopt these plans. We rely on them for our daily work and that is how we handle all of our work programs and implementation.
That's close. The Auburn plan that came about in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was about connectivity, greenway, blue way. Where, where would we look to place that in this planning, in the, in, in twenty forty or in, in a comp plan?
So a few things, we've been revamping that for a while because we're looking at what we call priority greenways. And Town Creek is one of them, where you see Capital Project will finish. It's actually not the last piece, but you'll see the Moore's Mill to through Wright's Mill Elementary piece come forward. It can belong in both documents depending on what the priority levels are because it, it does deal with the land. But sometimes a twenty forty process encourages that more strongly in funding priority. We'll end up coming out of twenty forty with, it was twenty-two goals for twenty twenty. There's not a succinct number, it could be thirty goals for twenty forty, be whatever the number ends up being. Where those will become absolute funding priorities in the budget and that, that ties together. The comprehensive plan plays a small role in that, but it's kind of not, not, not to say. And so that will signal to us where we're heading.
Any other questions? The end product of all this is going to be basically your five-year update to the twenty thirty plan.
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive.
Not, not the city strategic plan.
Okay.
And that, that got confused some years ago. But this is, I think, as planning commission sees a little more of the city council at times is, and this month is the poster child for that, there are recommendations of denial by staff. So I've, I've had a couple of calls today from people saying, why do your staff recommend denial of my project? Or my client's project? And my answer has been, it's purely rooted in the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. That is consistent in what the staff does. In the same, I think a couple of you had questions about the optimal boundary. One of the outcomes of this, city council's asked a lot. We're going to show you where the optimal boundary has always been and what has gotten outside the original optimal boundary. Unless you vote on something called removing the optimal boundary line, we're always going to show you where the original line was. And that, that matrix of every department in this room got involved in the optimal boundary from a service standpoint. As Logan went over in the white format, it took us nearly six months of the staff to come up with the optimal boundary. And again, that was predicated on many things. And I think there's actually more sensitivity now by the rural adjacent communities around us than there was at the time we formulated that about somehow, I still don't know, and I've said it before, how the rumor got out that Auburn was trying to annex everyone because we're not. And they're important and have their own identity and that's fine. I want to remind you, let's say legislation does not allow us to forcibly annex anyone. We can do that by legislation only with a, basically our legislative delegation being unanimous about it. And so it's extremely rare. Rare, and the last time we tried to do that, which was County Islands mainly on South College, we went down to burning flames. And did not get that moved forward. And that goal was to make South College unified in terms of a gateway into the city. And that did not go over very well. This is a property rights state and will remain as such.
And still to this day, there are islands on South College?
Absolutely. Lots of them, where they don't look like things that we allow in the city or on them, that's probably it.
Real quickly, I just want to thank you to everybody that worked so hard tonight. Thank you, Logan, for your leadership on this. I want to thank the Parks and Rec Advisor Board for everything that they're doing, our Water Board for all that you do. What a great staff we have here at the city and thank you for all of your time here tonight. Thank you for supper, Megan. Thank you, Al, for staying late with your building. And thank you for what you do over here at Community Services. This is a major effort. We've got a lot going on in our city. I hope you're all confident that our staff is on top of all this as, uh, growth continues to come to Auburn. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. Y'all have a good week.